Call to orders, the Tuesday, October 1st, 2019 meeting of the Monmouth City Council. And we'll start off with the lovely Phyllis Bowman and a roll call, please.
Maybe. She knows us all by now. There we go. Counselor Belts.
Here.
Counselor Carey.
Here.
Counselor Lopez.
Here.
Counselor Sharmar.
Here.
Counselor Schinkel.
Here.
Counselor Silbernagle.
Here.
Mayor Coontz. I am here, and I will start us off with the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'd like to welcome those out there this evening to the Monmouth City Council meeting. Comments from the community are entertained during the time designated under citizen comments. And if you wish to speak to the council, please fill out the comment card and turn it in. Speaker's comments in this forum are limited to three minutes, but the council welcomes additional information in writing. Typically, a speaker's comment is taken under advisement to allow time for the council to review an issue. However, the mayor or councillors may ask a speaker for additional information or may convey to the speaker some information that addresses their comment. Please note on the speaker card if you would like to receive follow-up communication, and if so, what avenue is preferred. Thank you for your attendance at this meeting of the Monmouth City Council. And our council agenda this evening, we actually will be getting through three things. We have our business session, and then a work session. And then also tonight, the Urban Renewal Agency will be meeting to take action on an item under consideration by that body, which looks a lot like this body. So that's what we have tonight. And I will start off by entertaining a motion to approve the consent calendar, which consists of the minutes of the meeting of September 17th, both our council regular meeting and our work session. So moved?
Second.
Counselor Sharmar moved, Counselor Silbernagle second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? All right, thank you. We'll start off with the mayor's report. And actually, I have really had a wonderful experience last week attending the League of Oregon Cities Conference in Bend. I facilitated the mayor's association in a special session talking about emergency preparedness and Cascadia subduction zone. Really interesting. And then a little bit of a talk about what's the unique role of the mayor and the council. And in consultation with Chief Talon, in our city emergency operations plan, we actually do have certain roles and responsibilities. And so I'm going to be visiting with him and asking him to schedule some training with us on those things. Again, with September ended yesterday, and that was National Preparedness Month, but there's much to be done in these areas, as we know. So lots of other interesting stuff there, but I will move along. I have one other item this evening myself, and that was, you should have all received an application for gentleman Kurt Kozinski, who is interested in joining the Arts and Culture Council Commission, has some great background and interest in that, really wants to see different sorts of art in our community, and sounds like he would be a great addition to the Arts and Culture Commission. So I would entertain a motion for that appointment.
I move appointment of Kurt Kozinski to the Arts and Culture Committee Commission.
Thank you. Second. And moved and seconded, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. We will give them a call and get them there. It just so happens, we have a meeting next week, so get right in. And we'll talk a little bit about our other boards and commissions. And then I do have one other little agenda item I was going to, if you would indulge me, to move the citizen comments ahead of the stormwater utility presentation this evening. I know one of our commentators this evening has another event, and since she's my boss, I told her I would try to ask your favor to let her get out of here to attend the high school academic awards. All right, so starting off with our reports from boards and commissions, and Counselor Carey, our planning commission.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, the planning commission met on September 18, and I sort of gave you a thumbnail anticipation of what that meeting was going to entail last time. And the discussion, really, primary discussion centered on a possible amendment to our zoning to allow residential in a commercial office zone. And the commission was amenable to look at that further. That will be on the agenda for our meeting tomorrow night. We meet again tomorrow night. There's a public hearing on short-term rentals and trees, which is a combination you don't normally think of, but in the interest of expediency, that's how we're doing it. And then there will be a work session where the commission will actually be presented with three different options in terms of what residential, what housing might look like in a commercial office zone. So there's three different options for them. And then last week, we also finished up, or last time, sort of finished up on the housing needs analysis, which we'll be dealing with here a little bit later on. So that concludes the report.
Wow, thank you. And Counselor Sharmar, our seniors, senior advisory board.
My grandparents lived above their store for most of their lives, so this is not something new.
Successful.
Yeah, that's kind of a thought. The senior advisory board met last week, and they would like everyone out there to know that there is an opening on the senior advisory board, and if anybody is interested in gerontology or the goings and comings of people over the age of 55, we'd love to have you apply for the senior advisory board. There is a big need for volunteers to help with the putting up and taking down of their activities, such as the breakfasts and potlucks and so forth. Then to remind you that on Saturday is the best $6 breakfast in town, a community breakfast with lots and lots of wonderful pancakes and fluffy scrambled eggs and biscuits and gravy. And I know all your mouths are watering now, so I'll stop talking. There is a soup and pie sale on October 17th, so you can either donate a pie or come down and have a pie and some soup. And they have some plans in the future for a festive community breakfast in December and a holiday bazaar.
Right.
Thank you.
Sounds great. And I think in the spirit of Counselor Lopez's "Meet Your Council" at the Music in the Park, I'm going to start planning to do "Meet Your Council" at breakfast. So maybe ask if I can borrow the signboard and sit there and invite others to join me. I'll send out an email and have folks sign up for different months that we can attend. It's a two-hour commitment if we want to go sit and visit with folks while they're enjoying the senior breakfast, so. All right, and the tree advisory board.
Tree advisory board did not meet, looked like at the last minute that we had some folks that were sick and some that were out of town, and we were going to have quorum, so. But still planning a tree planting in the fall.
For fall, so they have some work to do there. Do you know where that's going to be by any chance? We're looking at Suzanne.
I think they're still working on that, and we don't have a date yet, as far as I know, unless it's been identified in the last few days.
Okay. Well, we will be able to announce that ahead then. Okay, thanks. And Counselor Lopez, Minnet.
Minnet has been busy. First and foremost, our network upgrade that we've been working on for a number of years, the GPON project, as it's been referred to, is now 100% complete. I see this as a huge success story. Not only did we come in two years ahead of schedule, but also over a million dollars under budget. So the combination of those is not something you often hear of when speaking about, you know, government or government-supported entities, but it's to great, you know, to great credit to the team there. All of this was done with inside staff, no outside contractors were utilized in the process. And I know that there was a lot of concerted effort as the team as a whole to get this done for us. So what this means for the town and the current subscribers to Minnet is that data speeds have been increased and add no additional cost to customers. Also, stability, talking about, you know, how we communicate as part of the safety plan to tie it back to the Safety September. The stability of the network is much greater than it ever has been, as well as the scalability. So huge success there, and wonderful to have that now tucked away and completed. Another thing that we've been working on recently is the Lifeline application. And I've kind of dangled bits and pieces about this in council meetings in the past. Lifeline is a federal program that provides subsidies for phone and internet service for those that, you know, are at need, on public assistance, with disability income, or anyone who is at 135% or less of the poverty line. And what this entails, so we have now been approved for the program, so to the nitty-gritty of it, what it does is it allows any of those groups of people at need to be able to have basic internet and phone line for around $5.50 per month. That's with the subsidy. And really, really hopeful that if there are those that, you know, are finding themselves, you know, at need of this service, there is a small application that has to be filled out. That application can be found at Minnet, and I believe the city in the future. And it's something that, you know, they're really trying to do to make sure that everybody in our community has both internet and telephone access. And then my final piece for Minnet is, in the national news today, there were some waves about, you know, the last, or one of the last death blows to net neutrality. And I wanted to take this opportunity to remind everybody that Minnet is committed to the core precepts of net neutrality. They won't block or throttle speeds. We won't use consumer data without consent. We don't sell consumer data, usage patterns, contact information, any of that to third parties. And they're really, really dedicated to serving us as a community and our needs. And I'm happy to be a part of that and represent the city on Minnet's board.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you. One note, due to the holiday schedule, we will be changing our normal meeting. And so the November-December meetings will be combined, and we'll be meeting on December 12th at 7:30 a.m. at the Minnet building.
Thank you. And community announcements. What else is going on in the community we need to know about? Okay, I'll go. Friday night is the Monmouth History and Mystery Event, the first annual activity where folks will get to hear about some of the unusual goings-on and interesting history here in Monmouth. And that event will actually be held over at our amphitheater. If weather holds out, we encourage folks to bring a blanket, a lawn chair, and a flashlight. And you will have four storytellers up there with some fascinating information. This is a great partnership with Western Oregon University. We have our history partners in the community, Polk County Historical Society, and also the Heritage Museum have our contributing items to the event. And we're going to have a table where folks can tell their own tales, their history of Monmouth. We want to start building up a little bit of an oral history ourselves. So I am pleased to serve as your emcee. Counselor Belts and Counselor Lopez, and a young woman named Kylie Halama are going to be your storytellers. So join us Friday night at 6:30? Seven o'clock? Well, come early. It's going to get dark.
Come early, enjoy.
You have to sit there while it gets dark.
You have to stake out your seat.
You have to get a great seat, so. It'll be a lot of fun, looking forward to that. Other community announcements. Yes, Counselor Carey.
On Saturday, Western Oregon's football team is back home after being on the road for two weeks. They've won two games in a row against difficult competition on the road. And so anyway, it's going to be good to see them back. And sort of, not related, but sort of, the Great Northwest Athletic Conference is going to be hosting the Student-Athlete Advisory Committee for the conference, which means there's two representatives from each member institution. And they will be in a training session and in some legislative review meetings on our campus. On Friday, they'll be attending the football game and tailgating with yours truly and others. And we're going to try to show them the virtues of an intercollegiate football team on their campus and all the good things that can spring from that. So if you happen to be at the ballgame, stop by and probably have a hot dog for you and introduce you to some really outstanding student-athlete leaders from all the different schools in our conference.
Great. And the conference that Western is in is pretty broad, right?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, all over, you know, Hell's Half Acre is one of the descriptions of it. Alaska to Los Angeles, to Nampa, Idaho, and Billings, Montana, parts unknown.
That's where our students-athletes play, right? When they have a road game.
It is a road game.
That's where they go, so thank you for that reminder. All right, then our city managers' report for the very final time from Scott McClure.
God, I know that's a fill of pressure.
Wow, I know, this ought to be good.
Okay, well, it's kind of standard. So the first item, Homeless Coalition, making some good progress. Actually, I had a couple of names, the Grand Ron Tribe has actually signed on now. That's a unique aspect that most don't have. Making some good progress on getting that kind of core document together. One really nice sign is there's an advisor from the federal government that is overseeing this process going forward, and they said they hadn't seen a group organized to this level. Normally, apparently, they get a sign, and the people are just trying to figure out what's going on, and we're already evolving a lot faster than they expected, so I think it's going to be a good process. New student feed on campus, had that last week, and so that went really well. We had Jack's Pub do the catering on that, and they did a really nice job. Had about 17 participants in there, the businesses, shopping things, and so worked out really well, had a nice flow there. Building projects, just a lot going on everywhere. You can just kind of reiterate that all the time. But on campus, ITC building is going to get gutted pretty severely, seismic upgrades, got to really strip it down. And at the same time, you got the Military Academy building going. And then of note, the South Town Apartments down by the shops there, probably a week or two away from actually having units available, so they're getting close there. And then just a separate note, with these students coming back, you know, we have a lot more activity. Most times, that's good for the businesses. Unfortunately, the police department's had a lot of new activity too, so, which kind of goes with the turf sometimes.
And they're out knocking on doors to remind students about being good neighbors, I know.
And interesting one they've observed, actually, on campus, Ann, is that the students for a number of years got really distributed out amongst the community into just houses, rental houses. And they're now actually kind of reclustering again back into the apartment complexes. And so it's actually kind of an interesting trend how it shifted, so we don't have as much just the rental homes, you know. So kind of interesting element there, so.
Oh, hopefully, yeah, get more sort of long-term renters in there, so.
Yep, that'll do it.
That's it?
That'll do it.
So I will also remind everyone, Thursday night, we are, Thursday afternoon, getting a chance to say goodbye to Scott. We invite the community to join us at the library, the Monmouth Library, from 4:00 to 6:00 to be able to have some delicious goodies. I'm sure Phyllis is in charge of the organization of this, so we know it's going to be good, and a chance to chat about all the great things we've done and have had going on here. And wish Scott well as he goes on up to Cambie, moves into the Clackamas County metro area for some new adventures, so.
Yep, thank you.
All right, thank you. And so, two citizen comments, and we have one. So if you please join us at the table and speak into the microphone, let us know your name and address.
My name's Dr. Jennifer Cavista. My address is 1750 Madrona Street East in Monmouth. I'm here tonight as the superintendent of Central School District to invite the madam mayor, members of the council, and members of the Monmouth staff to our community chats. This past spring, I had 19 community chats and six staff chats to really start to develop the school district's strategic plan and accountability system that we are developing. Part of this is a requirement through the Oregon Department of Education, but we are really, it was very important to me in my second year that I received information from the community about what was important to them. And so we have had a couple of meetings already to share what I'm going to say is our draft of the strategic plan and some of the accountability pieces, as well as the key objectives that we are going to focus on for the next three to four years. So there is a flyer for you that explains that. We are looking for some final, what I call, last input. I spent most of the summer diving into the data because there was a lot of data from the community and our staff in those processes last spring. So this next week, October 10th, we will have an event from 6:00 p.m. to 7:30 at Ash Creek Elementary. There's also another one, October 16th, again, the same time, 6:00 p.m. to 7:30 at Central High School. And then our final review, October 23rd, 6:00 p.m. to 7:30 at Henry Hill site. So I look forward to, we are looking for, again, final input from the community. We're very, I am very excited as a superintendent to be able to take all the data that I received last spring and to put it into what I think is a pretty phenomenal plan for us to have for the next three to four years with the school district. So again, look forward to having as many of you there to listen and give us final feedback before we move forward. So I appreciate the time this evening, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Enjoy your next event.
I will. I like when kids get awards.
Yeah, right. So our other presentation this evening is actually from the consultants who've been working for quite some time with Russ Cooper in our Public Works Department, talking about a potential stormwater utility, something that would be a new fund for us, a new operation. And we have members of the FCS group here tonight to give us their final findings. And Russ, there's probably some additional introduction that you can make for us.
Yeah, thank you. I have John Gilarducci here and Doug Gabbert. The concept for tonight is to give you an update on progress that's been made in developing the stormwater utility. Specifically, we're going to present, or Doug and John are going to present, three service levels and the rates that would be associated with those service levels. They will have a little bit of introduction, kind of some information that will bring us up to speed, what they've done, present those rates, offer time for some questions. And then staff will be looking for feedback on whether council is ready to move forward with a public involvement process, so, thank you.
Thank you, Russ. Thank you, mayor and council. As Russ said, I'm John Gilarducci. I'll start off with some background. And we will quickly segue into actual results. So the way we've laid it out, a little bit of background on the city stormwater system, which you are well familiar with. We'll talk about the general rate-setting approach, how we've calculated the rates, and the proposed rate structure. And then Doug will get into the service levels and the resulting rates. So the Monmouth Stormwater System, as you know, two major drainage basins, a collection system of pipes, catch basins, and ditches. The problems that the program addresses and that the capital improvement plan is targeted to address are undersized pipes and lack of stormwater improvements, lack of capital improvements in the recent past. The way that we have gone about the study thus far and the numbers that you will see, if you look at the left-hand side of this graphic, we've talked through a number of policy issues, where we presented in papers different issues, pros and cons, and recommended an approach forward. We've discussed some of these policy issues with staff and with the council at a previous meeting. The direction from this policy framework you will see incorporated into the numbers. So the recommended rate structure is what you'll see in the results, the fiscal policies we talked about, you'll see in the financial plan, et cetera. We are at the point now where we've taken the operating budget, the capital improvement plan, and that operating budget for different optional service levels to determine the revenue requirement, which is the total amount of money that we need from rates. That's the key number. How much do we need annually? Then we take, basically, the math is we divide that by the customer data, and that gives us our rate calculation. And we will show you then how that's to be applied to individual properties. That's really the point where we are right now. This is, you could consider this, although we've met before, the first step in the public outreach, that is still to come. And then we will document everything in a report. So the rate structure is pretty simple. The way the rate will be applied, the number you will hear from Doug is a dollar amount per equivalent service unit. And the way that number is applied, all single-family residences get charged for one equivalent service unit. So their single-family residential is charged uniformly, that rate, based on the average amount of impervious surface area per single-family residence in Monmouth. So, because that's the only way we have to really measure runoff, is the amount of hard surface that a property has. For all other developed property, which includes commercial, institutional, everything else that's got hard surface on it, we actually have the measured impervious surface area for those properties, and we express that measured amount as a number of equivalent service units or equivalent residences. So if you look on the right there, that non-SFR or other, if we take a sample property with 60,000 square feet of impervious surface area, that's a lot, well over an acre, divide that by the ESU value of 3,000 square feet, that's that average, they would have 20 equivalent residences or equivalent service units, and they would pay 20 times that unit rate, the rate that we would talk, the rate that we'll be providing in a minute. So that's the basic structure, uniform for single-family, and then everybody else based on their measured impervious surface area.
All right, so let's talk about the financial analysis. Beginning with some key assumptions of the analysis, let's start in the upper right and sort of work around counterclockwise. We began with a forecast of operating expenses for three levels of service. We'll explain in a couple of minutes what those levels of service are and what they mean. But for each level of service, there is different O&amp;M requirements, and there are capital requirements that are the same for all three of those levels of service. Moving on to the cost inflation, every expense seems to get more expensive over time, and that's what those escalating factors are from. They tend to be from national indices that we have They tend to be from national indices that we have followed. They seem to be pretty accurate. We ran them by staff, and they seem to work pretty well here. They're all between 2% and 3%, which is where you expect inflation to be anyway. Likewise, we expect your customer account growth to grow by 1% per year. That's about average, and so, we make sure that we adjust our revenue projections accordingly. And any fund balance you have will gain interest at a certain rate, and if we go by LGIP, the short-term fund, we're well north of 2%, which is a whole other conversation of why are that so high, but we won't go there. But I'd love to talk about it with someone who's interested. The capital funding, I will show you in a minute the details of that $1.9 million in the capital improvement plan. It's four projects, and we'll show you what four they are. We understand that you have the ability to do some internal financing, which will be advantageous for you, not just because the interest rate is low, we're modeling it 2.25% but you get to avoid things like coverage requirements, which could really jack up the rates, and you don't have to worry about that, and no issuance costs as well. So, the process of stepping through a revenue requirement, we have to project your needs, and the needs of utility include those four components that you see there, operations and maintenance, debt service, internal debt service is still debt service, right? Capital costs and annual target reserve balances. We bake those fund balances into the modeling, so although you may not see it specifically, it is built into the needs to have a certain rate to allow you to keep a certain amount of cash in the bank at the end of the year. And then we evaluate the sufficiency of those rates at every year individually over a multi-year period to see if those rates need to be adjusted, and that allows us to develop a rate plan and smooth it out to balance the needs of the utility and as much as possible to minimize customer impacts. So, let's talk about that CIP, four projects I told you about. They are all listed here. The really visible project that is going to make a difference and is going to be done early for that reason is the Stadium Church Street Improvements Project. It's your largest one up there, and that will get started in fiscal year 2021, which is next fiscal year. It's the fiscal year beginning July 1st. Of the other three projects up there, the one that I will draw attention to is, the top of the list is the Stormwater Master Plan. So, part of the goal of the Stormwater Utility is to provide funding for a stormwater master plan, the result of which will be a list of projects that then have to be funded. Now, I see you nodding that you know what that is, but I just wanted to give you a heads-up that we're going to give you a rate here, but the needs in a couple of years are going to go up. So, I just want to make sure that you're ready for that. So, a couple of those projects will begin next fiscal year, a couple more two years after that. Total cost, about $1.9 million for your initial project list. Now, as I said before, your operations and maintenance is going to be based upon three different levels of service. On the left side of this matrix, you will see the words "basic," "medium," and "optimal." And you have this on paper in front of you, right? Because maybe it's more clear, maybe it's more clear there. What you will also see is a figure, a dollar figure, which represents the bare annual cash requirement for that operations and maintenance level. This is before any kind of overhead or anything else. This is straight from the engineer. And an estimated FTE count over and above existing FTEs. You'll notice that "basic," "medium," and "optimal," those are three convenient words. Let me tell you what those mean. Basic means status quo, what you're doing now. So, you do the same things you're doing now, but now you have a dedicated revenue stream, and now your street fund can do street stuff. That's that level of service. The medium level of service, instead of being completely reactive as you were in the basic level of service, now you're starting to get in front of things a little bit, which mitigates some risk because you're not necessarily waiting until everything fails to do something about it. The optimal level of service is now you're doing full-on asset management. You have a plan for replacing things when they need to be replaced, when they're supposed to be replaced. You're basically doing everything that would be required of you if you needed an MS4 permit, which you don't, but it's that level of service, that level of rigor. Does that make sense? So, three different approaches to level of service generating three different sets of rates. The matrix will give you a sense of what is, what concretely is in each level, the capital projects, of course, being the same for all three levels. But if you look at some of these, some of these, like, for example, just to give you a sense of how this matrix works, look at public education. At the basic level of service, you have Public Works Day, outreach to local schools, a leaf pickup brochure. At the medium level of service, you still have all of those things in the basic level of service, but now you're adding an annual brochure about the Stormwater Utility to educate the public. And at the optimal level of service, you have those same two things from the previous levels of service, but now you have a website and an expanded program for outreach and education as you would under the SMPs of an MS4 permit. So, that's how the matrix works. John, did you want to jump in and add anything about the matrix?
No, except, well, the one thing I'll add is just to reinforce what's probably obvious, that we're presenting these as choices, and you don't have to do all three of these. It's your choice which of the three you choose to deliver and the associated cost.
So, when we start to put all these costs together on an annual basis, we begin to have these stacked columns that you see here. So, the green at the bottom of each stack, that is your operating costs, and then the, what do you want to call it, tan above it is franchise fee. The blue, you'll notice the blue doesn't exist at first and then starts in 2021 and then gets a little bigger later. That is your internal financing and the debt service that you have to pay to yourselves for that debt. When I say "to yourselves," I mean out of the Stormwater Utility into where it came from. The line that sits on top of those columns is the amount of revenue generated at the recommended rates. The recommended rates, which is what you really want to see here, is at the bottom, on the bottom of that chart. Starting in 2021, fiscal year 2021, that's the year that begins July 1st, the monthly rate for one ESU, which means one single-family residence, is $11.88. So, that's the key number from this slide for the basic level of service in the first full year of implementation, which we're calling '21. You're looking at a monthly cost of $11.88 per month per ESU. Medium level of service, same structure. You see how those green columns, those green stacks at the bottom get bigger because that's what's driving the difference in level of service. The 2021 rate for the medium level of service, $16.64 per ESU. Optimal levels of, level of service, notice how the green bar is bigger still, which makes the tan bars bigger, but everything else is the same as it was before. And now in 2021, we're looking at a monthly bill of $25.67 per ESU. Now, we won't make you hold all those different rates in your head at once. We have a nice little comparison table. So, these are the three levels of service by year. You'll notice that I'm kind of ignoring that first column, 2020. It's our recommendation, that you do too, that we're recommending full implementation of the stormwater fee no earlier than July 1st of 2020, which puts you in fiscal '21. So, that's why we're kind of ignoring that first column. So, in that first year of implementation, $11.88 per month for basic, $16.64 per month for medium, and $25.67 per month for optimal. We thought you would want to know a little bit about your customer base, and in particular, how the university fits into it. We know that the university is a very important customer. It's for that very reason that we shared the information we are sharing with you now just a few hours ago with the university. So, we are, we are trying to be your ambassadors to them, to keep them in the loop and make sure that they're involved. It turns out that Western Oregon University represents 15% of the impervious surface area in the city of Monmouth, so they will be a significant customer. So, before I give this back to John, I want to show you some rate comparisons and give you a little caveat here. We're comparing the rates we just gave you for Monmouth for 2021, and we are comparing them with rates going on elsewhere right now. So, with that little caveat that we're a little bit apples and oranges up here, you do get a sense that for some of these, for your lower levels of service, you're kind of, you're kind of in the ballpark with other cities. Of the nearby cities, Salem tops out at $17.17 per month. They, of course, are a full MS4 requirements that they have to do. Your smaller, some of your smaller cities have some smaller bills. But your basic level of service would be right in the middle of that rate pack, for lack of a better word.
I guess one thing to add there, Doug, sorry, is we're showing the 2019 rates for the comparable cities, and these are the 2021 rates for Monmouth. You may have mentioned that, but... Okay, so, we're at a key, a key point in this process, and we certainly acknowledge that. We've been in front of you twice. We've talked to the university a second time today, but there hasn't been public engagement beyond that yet. We have, as part of our consultant team, Barney &amp; Worth, they are a public relations firm. They've done a lot of public involvement efforts, like the one contemplated here. You have some options as far as how you go forward. What we've planned for are several open houses that would be, you know, open to anyone in the, in the city. Those could be targeted to specific audiences to share information about the needs that we are trying to address here, the need for the fee, and what the city would hope to accomplish. There are other models for going about public engagement that I would be happy to talk through with you, but that's what we've planned for. This is a, this is an action the council can take councilmanically to adopt the fee. It doesn't require a public vote. So, next steps are to incorporate your feedback and direction, execute whatever public outreach you direct. We would draft then an ordinance and resolution adopting the utility and the rate, the supporting rate for your consideration, and then possible adoption and implementation.
Questions about methodology, numbers, Roxanne?
I don't know if you have the answer or not, but what can Dallas do for $2.78? How is there so low? Are they subsidizing it?
We don't, Dallas is not a city that we have worked with, so I'm afraid I can't, I can't answer that with any certainty. It wouldn't surprise me, but I don't know. If there are subsidies.
Yes, and Counselor Sharma.
Do you have estimates for how much revenue this would generate at each three levels each year?
So, for 2021, that basic level of service, that rate would generate about $630,000 in At the medium levels, level of service, about $880,000, and that's total rate revenue. That would cover operations and capital, the debt service. And then the optimal level of service, about 1.4 million would be the total rate revenue for the utility in 2021.
I believe that's on the far right-hand side of page 11, 12, and 13. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
It's listed as the expense side instead of the revenue side.
It is, it is the revenue requirement. The expenses are what we are targeting the revenue for, so they happen to be the same number.
So, I would assume then that if you, if the projects that you've listed here need almost $2 million, that they couldn't be done in a year, that putting in the larger pipes and education, that sort of thing?
So, the, the number that is included in the numbers John just gave you would be for the debt service for the, so not, not the actual expenditure to build the project. That would be, that would be taken right out of debt proceeds.
Spread out over...
You're spreading out the repayment.
Over years.
Yeah, that's right.
Because we're assuming internal financing.
Okay, I don't understand any of that.
So, from the, from a standpoint of cash flows, you are paying for these projects with a certain dollar amount each year. You're not paying for it all at once upfront.
Okay, sort of like your house.
Exactly.
Instead of taking the loan out from the bank, we are, we would take the loan out from, for example, one of our other funds. We often loan money to ourselves. We do repay it with interest, but we would get the benefit of the cash and then repay. The expense side would be over time.
So, essentially, the three annual revenue figures that we gave you include the mortgage payment, not the full price of the house.
Ah, okay, okay. Will any of, any of these projects or any of this service deal with helping developers who are putting in new houses create more permeable surface on the property?
Not at a, not at a basic level. As you go up in those, none of the projects do. But as far as, as the services provided, when you get to that optimal level, we're working, we're working with educating folks. We would be looking at our design standards, updating our design standards. What we would definitely be doing is more enforcement to ensure that construction activities are not polluting or adding...
I guess, I guess I'm just, I'm thinking of some way of encouraging developers to put in permeable driveways and walkways and hardscaping in the, in the, the area in the property that isn't roof.
Sure. So, there's two ways that that will happen over time or with this process. One of those is that as we look at developing the ordinance, there's the possibility for a credit process or system that's built into the rate model for the, mainly for the, not the single-family residential, but for the businesses, the university, and the SRF. Anyhow.
Multi-family.
Non-single-family resident. To encourage that, them to implement lower-impact development. And then the other is currently, the city's design standards don't encourage that, so updating our design standards would begin to... So updating our, our design standards would begin to encourage that and provide that as an option for development.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Byron.
Two questions. This is for, better suited for Russ. So just looking at the projects, they seem pretty, pretty narrow to the sort of the west side of town, but everybody is going to be, let's say we implement this, everybody's going to be responsible for paying into this fund. How, how do these, virtually three projects, benefit everybody in the city of Monmouth? Benefit everybody who's paying into this fund?
The, the, the four projects that are listed, everybody will benefit from the, indirectly from the master plan, because that is, that's kind of us doing due diligence, being good stewards of, of the resources that we have. It kind of builds in a, a little bit of asset management. So everybody benefits from that. The large project on the west side, which, which is a project that we currently have, I won't say annual flooding and, and property impact, but very routinely we have that. So, so that is a, a project that the city should be addressing to, to prevent property damage. The other two projects are actually on the opposite end of town, and, and one of those addresses some, some flooding that has been observed. And the other is, is a, a project that has a lot of staff time maintenance in trying to keep a, an open ditch flowing and, and kind of the, the associated issues with that of, of mosquitoes, nutria, vegetation that, that grows up out of a ditch. It runs along back property line. So it's, it's a real difficult maintenance issue for staff, and, and it comes up all the time, so.
Well, I think it's also important to note, what this does is these projects now and all of this other work comes out of the street fund, because we don't have a specific stormwater utility fund. And therefore, the benefit to everyone else is operating costs come out of the street fund, and now we have more money to pay for street repairs and work.
Right, but, but somebody, they're paying for it. And so that, the people who aren't impacted by the flooding are going to say, how does this, how does this benefit me? Because right now, I'm paying into the street fund. It, it does whatever it does. But, yeah, it frees up money for, for the city to do stuff with, but it's coming out of, it's coming out of people's pockets.
Correct.
So I get, my question is, is for somebody who doesn't experience this flooding, how does this benefit them?
Right, so, so the rate that, that a customer will be paying, the largest percentage of that are for services that they do receive currently. And, and that's shown in the, in the green or the, the larger section on the bottom. The, the actual capital or the project portion of the rate are those, those small slivers at the top. So it's really, and correct me if I'm wrong, but it, it's really a relatively small portion or percentage of the total rate that customers would be paying. So in time, customers will, will have maintenance done to lines that are in front of their place. Eventually, their, their lines that, that directly service them will be replaced, understanding also that stormwater moves downhill. So every, almost everybody is impacted by what, what's going on upstream from them.
So this would be, just sort of trying to paraphrase this, this is a, a jumping off point. This puts us in a, gives us a good platform to address future needs, not just these three projects that we see.
Absolutely.
Correct, yeah.
And if I, if I could add to that, Byron, just capital projects are always tricky if you've got targets, you know, because the idea is
you're supposed to pick the ones that are most important.
Right.
And in some cases, people address kind of your concerns, and they go, okay, even though some of these projects aren't really that important, we're going to scattershot them around town so people see it at a simple level. If you're in a new subdivision, you could argue, I have perfect streets, perfect sidewalks, perfect waterline, perfect sewer. I don't want to pay for all those other parts of town.
Right.
The fact is, you, you bought into a club. You, you're in the city. The city needs to manage its utilities, its systems properly, and need to chip in. Similar argument could be, I don't have kids in school, so why am I paying taxes?
Right.
So the main thing is, it's just a big system. We have to take care of everybody. We're all part of the same team.
Yeah. Thank you. And then secondly, looking at the optimal service level, there seems to be some stuff. Is there a way to mitigate this? You know, we're talking, is it the MS4? Is that what, is that what that's called?
So they're, they are part of the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, or NPDES, requirements for small, for small cities that don't yet apply to Monmouth. They, they will, they require those cities to get a permit and practice a number of different best practices or minimum measures in order to be compliant.
Okay.
That's the MS4 permit.
So is there a way to mitigate the expense here by, I don't know how to better express it, but just cut some of the fluff off and really focus on the, the service elements as opposed to, you know, establishing and maintaining a website and, you know, mitigating some of the expenses we have with this stuff that is nice, but not necessarily necessary to the actual service that's being provided, you know, the infrastructure or whatever. Does that make sense?
Our public information and education.
Yeah, so, you want to?
Yeah, I think the interesting one though is what you're calling fluff. Actually, a lot of that's requirements of the program.
Right.
Requirements of what program?
Of, of the, of the, the federal government's programs.
MS4.
Stormwater.
But we're not required.
And we're not required, so yes.
That's my, that's my point, is we're not required for that to have all that.
But those, those things will come, though, and a lot of it's, well, you, you see even just simple things like you've seen the stamps sometimes that are, you know, drains, don't put, you know, don't put it in the storm drain. It ends up in a stream. A lot of times that's required, because the whole idea is, is you're encouraging people not to do that. And so that's actually very valuable, you know, versus trying to treat it. Let's have everybody dump their motor oil down the storm drain, then we attempt to treat it somehow. If we can keep it out, we're a lot better shape. So some of the things you're considering fluff, not necessarily.
The Department of Environmental Quality is, uh, stormwater and stormwater quality is, is kind of the, the uprising environmental movement for municipalities and DEQ in general. And so they are currently working on new rules for even smaller systems like the city of Monmouth that, that we're going to be asked to implement. And so while the, the, the highest level of service here is, is presented as positioning us to be prepared for being an MS4 permit holder, we're, we're being required, or we're going to in the near future, be required to begin doing much more public education, much more contractor oversight, things like that. So, so whether we choose that service level in our rate structure, the city will still have an obligation to begin providing some of those services. And so it, it'll just be a balancing of, of, like we do now. We, we want to be the best stewards of, of the rate, and so we, we make sure that we're getting the, the best bang for that dollar.
And your, your point is very well taken, though. The, the reason for the matrix is to try and give you a menu like that so you can choose the services you want to deliver.
I'm kind of like, okay, à la carte. I want, I want this, I necessarily want that.
To some extent, I think you can do.
Yeah.
It, it's, some of these are probably married to others, so it's hard to do a lower level of one. But I think for the most part, to the extent we can put numbers to them, we can, you can do that. You could choose a lower level for one and, and do it à la carte.
Thank you.
And I think our hope and, and your hope that through the, the kind of this public involvement process is that we'll get a sense of what is important to the citizens of Monmouth and to the business owners and the university and, and, you know, where they fall in there as well. What services do they want the city to provide?
Councilor Lopez.
There's been a lot of talk about, about the MS4 accreditation. Is that what it's called?
Designation.
What is the current threshold, the current mandated threshold of, is it by city size that you have to do an MS4 once you hit a certain population level? Or how, how does that work?
It's population, and, and we're, we're a good ways off from the MS4 permitting, yes.
What is the current population level required for MS4 permitting?
I think it's 50,000.
Okay, so it's, it's a ways away, but at the same time, they're also coming closer, or they're, there's tightening down there.
One, yeah, yeah.
My, my second question has to do with, has to do with the street fund. And it looks like, you know, we have these three, these three options presented. And thank you very much for your work and for the, for the grid that you produced. It's very helpful to know that there is an à la carte option there. But as presented, you know, it runs from, for, for a homeowner, it runs anywhere from $142.56 a year to roughly double that at the optimal level. If we continued with our basic level of service, which is, my understanding is that that's the rate that we're draining the street fund currently, not doing anything extra. That's just what, you know, what we're effectively pulling out of the street fund. What does that do to the street fund in 2025, as far as this chart goes? Where does that leave us if we, if we said, ah, you know, scrap this, we'll, you know, stick with the status quo and not do, not do anything here?
Not implement a stormwater utility.
Yes.
We'll, we'll continue to pleat the revenues in that fund and, and continue to reduce the services that we provide.
So further reduction, not just maintaining the current level of street maintenance, but continually to, to further reduce.
Costs will continue to climb as, as we saw in the inflationary numbers at 2%, 3% across the board.
So at minimum, so what, what I'm hearing is that at minimum, the, the, the basic level as presented is essentially what we need to do to do our due diligence for the environment as well as preserve the operational, you know, operational cash for the street fund. Okay, thank you.
So I think, interestingly, the optimal level, although obviously more painful, is flat for many years, according to page 14. So gee, we could at least tell people, you know what you're going to get for a while according to these projections. That just seemed kind of interesting to me.
Yeah, it's, it's absolutely true. And, and a, a general rule is when you have larger rate increases at the beginning of a forecast period, you know, that's rate money that you get every year. And so other things being equal, you typically don't need as much increase further down the road.
And it bears out a little bit in the basic rate. The last four years on that charter projected to be about the same. Not true at all the medium rate, interestingly. The cost of services at the medium level are just enough higher, apparently, to require a little bit of inflationary growth in the rate each year as opposed to the basic or optimal.
John?
I'm a little confused by that as well. If we've got the inflationary increases that, Russ, that you mentioned, you know, I guess that, I, I'm a little surprised at that basic level that it's going to remain. I understand the, the optimal level, I suppose, although it's, I, I think we'd be a little sheepish, you know, at $25.67 in 2021, and then the same, and justify that juxtaposed with the 2027 at the same amount, if we're going to talk about inflationary increases. I, I guess that, that's, that's just something we need to consider. I have some, some other questions that, relative to some of the initial information. The ESU is, is, is a single-family dwelling. Is that correct?
An average single-family dwelling. That's correct, sir.
Average, single-family dwelling. And that, so we would apply, you know, whatever the rate amount, at, at whatever level that, that we are, to the average single-family dwelling. If I live in a 2,000-square-foot house, is my ESU the same as with the same, with a, as a 1,500-foot or square foot? So there's a leveling and an averaging there?
Yes, Councilor, yes.
Yeah, okay, okay, good. I, I think I assumed that.
I can, I can explain that a little bit if you, if you'd like.
Yeah, yeah.
And this is, it, it, it's basically the industry standard approach. And the reason it has become the industry standard approach is because it's so expensive and administratively burdensome to go out and measure every single-family residence.
Sure.
And the problem is, I mean, it's good work. They do vary, but they don't vary that much. And you end up doing a lot of work to find variances by nickels and dimes among these single-family residences. The other thing is, we're, we're looking at the, at the footprint. So it's, it's the roof area, plus the driveway, plus a patio. And you pretty quickly get to 2,500, 3,000, 3,500 square feet of impervious area when you think of looking at it from, from the sky. So that, that's, that's why it is that it, we've evolved into this sort of uniformity among single families, because it's just not worth the additional effort.
That, that makes sense on the, you know, on all sorts of levels. But it provides no incentive for a, you know, I'm just thinking of my own residence. You know, if I, i- i- instead of a concrete patio in the back, I go with a deck.
Right.
Trex deck. And I go to, my cross drive now is no longer impervious concrete, but it's, it's some sort of, you know, permeable surface. And there's, you know, I've got as much hardscape on the ground as I do on the roof. And there's no incentive in this for me to change that, is there?
There's, there's not a rate incentive to do that. Now, the council could choose to offer rate credits for something like that. The, you, you have to weigh those programs again with the administrative burden and the bang for the buck. You know, if you're talking about giving someone a 50-cent rate credit, that's still a lot, that's a lot of staff time to go out and confirm previous pavement or whatever it is at the residential level.
Yeah.
So typically, those credits are provided only for non-residential customers. That's where the big footprints are anyway. So what, you know, when they put in an onsite facility to help manage their runoff, that has a huge impact on the system, whereas the individual residents' choices don't necessarily reduce costs to the utility. So the incentive is only in, you know, it being the, a good thing to do, really. There's not a financial incentive typically.
If I may on that, though, the, and Russ talked about the design standards. You can create incentives elsewhere.
Mm-hmm.
In the design standards, for instance, and fees and things in construction and, and there. You don't have to do it in the, in the utility code. That's right.
Say that again.
Oh, you, you, you create some sort of preferences in the designs, in the, in the design standards. If we have design standards for these things where maybe they get a break on a fee, a, a permit fee, something like that, yeah.
System development.
Yeah, other ways to create incentives.
Sure, sure. Well, I, I just, I, I see opportunities, you know, the university, of course, being one, and then, and some, some of the existing developments that we have that might find a way to, you know, rain gardens and, and these sort of things that they would retrofit what they currently have. And it'd be, you know, I guess, because I think, I think we would all appreciate the fact that they did that. It would be nice to reward them financially in some way. And whether that's with a credit or whether that's with a modification here or something, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure. But anyway, that, that would be one of the things that I would be interested in pursuing when we, and when enough we get down to that. Now, I want to talk a little bit about this MS4 designation. That, that is a series of permits. Is that correct? That in order to discharge, you need to be at a certain filtration level or what?
It, it is a permit, and it, and it, it, the end goal of the permit is public education and water quality. So the, the city of Monmouth is not required to have that permit. We're, we're bringing that, we're, that's been presented to just kind of give a sense that there is a, there's a broad spectrum of stormwater quality standards that the city could attain to. And even though we're not required to, the city of Monmouth residents or the Monmouth council may have a desire to, to, to have those kind of water quality standards built into, into the way we do business. And, and so you would need a rate to pay for that. And, and so you would need a rate to pay for that kind of level of service. That's why that's presented in there. It's not anything that I think Monmouth needs to be concerned that in the next 10 years, we're going to become permitted like that. I can't dictate what the Department of Environmental Quality is going to do. I do know they are increasing their requirements even on the city of Monmouth and what they're expecting us to do in the way of stormwater quality.
And, but the permit, in order to get the permit, you need to do certain things?
The permit requires that you do certain things.
And, and what might those be? I'm just trying to figure out whether we'd want to do it, whether we're required to or not.
No, no.
A sense of monitoring?
It, it comes down to, to water quality monitoring, probably treatment at certain locations, robust public education, robust illicit discharge enforcement. That's just a kind of a shotgun of, of different things that you might be doing.
And so all of the, the comparison, the latest adopted rate comparisons, Salem is, is one that's sort of at the, at the highest level. I'm guessing Corvallis might be close to that?
They are.
And Albany would be close to that?
Albany and Corvallis are both subject to NPDES permitting requirements, yes.
And then others that are sort of comparable, Kaiser, well, probably Kaiser is too. Well, at, at any rate, do we have any sense of whether they're a basic, a moderate or optimal?
I would describe Kaiser as moderate.
Uh-huh, okay. Independence?
I'm going to guess they lean more toward basic.
And then, of course, Dallas is sort of, you know, off the end of the, the far tail. Newport, you know, tough to know. It, it doesn't really matter. We don't need to get into that level of detail. I'm just trying to get a sense of.
We've worked with Newport, and that, that is basic. They're facing needs much higher than their adopted rate and have, basically have yet to address them.
Yeah. Well, one of the, and finally, and then I'll shut up, Madam Mayor, I'm sorry. But one of the things that strikes me is, is that we're talking about setting a fee here, and, and I'm not, this is not, this is just observational. And one of the first things that we would do is, is develop a stormwater master plan, which will no doubt come up with additional expenses and costs, you know? And, and so we, we, we set a fee, and then we determine that it's inadequate because we've got more to do.
If, if I could put a silver lining on that.
Please do.
Because, because everything you said is absolutely accurate. But, but let me just add one happy thought to that, is once you have a master plan in place, you now have a document from which an SDC can be based. And now you have the opportunity for an system development charge for, to recover the costs of future projects and help you mitigate your rates.
Maybe one more silver lining, too, is, believe it or not, it, it's cheaper to know about these things and begin to address them than being surprised by them, by failures 15 years down the road. They'll be a lot more expensive then.
Thank you, Ken.
And Laurel, did you have?
I did. Counselor Lopez talked earlier about Minnet's new lifeline program, where people who can't afford the regular rates would be given a discount on their phone and internet costs. If we wanted to address those issues in terms of these rates, would that be something that the council would do to account for some sort of a break for people who can't afford another $25 a month, which might be half their monthly food budget?
So i- in general, as, as rates, you know, we look at these as, as recovering costs proportional to how the service is used and how the service is delivered. So, you know, we generally advise, we advise that our, our clients charge for services delivered regardless of who it is receiving the service. However, many provide discounts for qualifying low-income customers. I think what we would suggest is that whatever the city does with its water and sewer utilities now, that the stormwater rates be structured to provide a similar discount or no discount if that's what's done with water and sewer. You don't want to make it different, in my opinion.
I think, you know, I just feel that this is going to be kind of a hard sell to the public, because when you get our utility bill, we have a charge for water and we get clean drinking water with that. And, and we're charged for electricity, and we use that to light our homes and heat our homes. And, and the sewer, you know, we've got water running down the drain. We don't have to worry about what happens to it. But this kind of a rate, I don't know that the public's going to really be able to see the advantage to this.
Yeah, that's a great point.
Do you have recommendations on how to convince the public that this is an important environmental aspect of their life of living in Monmouth?
What, what I've seen work, because, I mean, that, that's a great point. It is, it is a less visible service than, than water and sewer. It's the absence of a problem. So what, what we've done that I think has been effective is focused in our outreach on what the, what the problems are, what the, you know, what is actually being solved, so that you try to answer for people what they're buying with this fee, rather than focusing on the rate structure and how it will be applied, kind of as we've done tonight. But try to focus more on how the money will be used to the benefit of, of the citizens of Monmouth. But it is, it is a harder one for exactly the reasons you said. So we have to focus all the more on what problems we're solving.
Maybe we'll have a 500-year flood this year, and then everybody will be convinced.
What's happening?
Who knocked on the table over there?
He doesn't want that. Counselor Belts?
Well, to, to go along with what Counselor Sharmer had said, I was thinking about, we've talked so often about the availability of affordable housing, and people are making a conscientious choice to move to a tiny home, which is 300 square feet. It would seem inequitable to say, oh, sorry, thank you for moving into a tiny little home and helping the environment, but now we're still going to charge you the same. And so it just seems that within our ordinances, we would be able to, I hope we could discuss that, because these people are making that conscious choice, or they're making an economic choice to move into an ADU or a manufactured home for the reason of having a smaller footprint.
So there, if, if I may, one approach that you could consider to help address that, that situation, that, that would not mean you have to measure all the single-family residences, is, and this has worked in a few places, you pick a threshold, let's say it's 1,500 square feet of impervious surface area, and allow people to, you know, if they're, if they're below that threshold, come in, show, show that to the city, and then they would get a rate discount. So you're not going out and measuring every property as a city. They're coming in and demonstrating that they have this small footprint home, they get the discount. I think you'd find it wouldn't be that many, it wouldn't be that many homes, but having it available for people might be an important feature. And you could do that to very little impact to the financial integrity, because it would be only a, a small subset of properties that it would apply to. Is that, I've seen a lot of heads nod.
That, that sounds like, yeah, like something we could certainly talk about. Thank you.
So I did want to talk that outreach for a second, because that is the next step if we decide to go that way. And I, I guess I could get a consensus here, but I'm sure, pretty sure I would get the answer that we, we want to move forward with this, but we really want to get input on what those services look like, what people expect, and what they feel like they can afford. So I do want to talk about the public engagement process and consultant resources. And you mentioned that we get assistance with that from Barney Worth. And just for those of you who don't know, Barney and Worth did our Monmouth Engaged Process. So they have actually worked in our community before on this kind of thing. But, and maybe, what does that look like a little bit? And what, what is the support? So you guys come and give all the jargon, and then they do all the rah-rah for us? Or how does that work?
Well, it kind of depends. I, I mean, the way I look at public outreach, the first thing to, the first thing to decide on is what your objective is. So I think if the objective is that we get communities' support for a new rate, I think that's a really hard objective, because having been through this many times, it's hard enough to get a small group of citizens educated enough to understand the need and then say, yeah, we think this is important and the city needs to do this. And that's working with a group of 10 people. If you're trying to do that citywide, I think it would be a lot of effort, a lot of expense. So the, the citizen committee approach has worked. It's also expensive. So I think that, and the way we've laid it out in, in the work plan, is to have a couple of open houses. And at the open houses, we would talk again about, about what the needs are, what the, what the reasons are, share the results of our work and how it would impact folks. And then we would work with Barney and Worth to talk about how best to message that, and then how to solicit input from the folks who come to the open houses. I think the big challenge, which I think is getting easier with social media, is getting people to come to these things. You know, I've been to open houses over the years where we've had two people show up or we've had 100 people show up. And I'm, I'm not a public relations guy, so I'm, I kind of scratch my head as to what, what's happening different here from here. But they can help us with that, so that we can get people hopefully to the meeting, so we can get the input that we need. There will be negative comments, there, there will be hopefully some positive comments, and then it, it will obviously be up to you again to decide where to go from there. But that's, those are sort of the options as I see them, and maybe the, maybe the best fit way forward, I think, would be the open house, just, just given the expense, which is relatively modest, and then providing folks the opportunity to come and weigh in, as opposed to the council just acting without that, without those opportunities for them to, to express their opinions.
Do you have any examples of those cities that had 100 people, so we can call them and ask them how they got there?
It was, it was a few years back, but we were setting up a, a transportation utility fee in Oregon City. And we went through, we actually did both there. They, they had a citizens committee that we worked through with, but then, but the big one was the open house. And we stood up in front of some pretty agitated folks and explained everything about what we were doing and why the city was very, Nancy Kraushaar and John Lewis, who is still there, would be a person to talk to. And the city passed it, and it's been, it's been a very successful fee now for, I think, about 12, 10 or 12 years. So that, that's one place where that, that model's, I know, I know I can think of others and give you some other, some other contacts, because we've been through this 20-plus times.
Right.
But there's one for you.
That's just helpful, yeah. If we can find out who's successful at getting that kind of input, and if there's something they did, other than just saying, well, if you don't come, you don't get a say whether it's $13 or $25. We don't want to go that route, so.
Well, there's, there's a couple, you know, the, one is the outreach and, and getting the, you know, the people to come in and learn. And boy, John, I couldn't agree more. I mean, it's a, it's a steep learning curve for this. I, I think, I think though, and it sounds as though you use this approach at Oregon City, this is a combined approach of, of the transportation, street fund and the impact on that, and, and how that is being, you know, drawing off, we can't, sir, we, we can't do potholes because we're doing stormwater. And it, it, we get the stormwater taken care of, which is an essential deal from an environmental standpoint, trying to keep ahead of the feds. You know, you can do all kinds of things that works in rural Polk County to engender some, some support there, even though the financial end of it may not be. But then talk about and how we can enhance the transportation system, be it more overlays, more crack seal, more bike paths, more sidewalk improvements that we've talked about ad nauseam, and it's still an issue to resolve. So there's a lot of ways that we could, we could get there, you know? I think the, the whole piece would be a comprehensive one.
Okay, yes.
If I may, one, one comment on, or one suggestion on messaging, because you, Counselor, you just mentioned the, the transportation fund. I, I counsel you to be as clear as you can when describing the role of the transportation fund in providing for stormwater needs.
Yes.
You would not want anyone to get the impression that, that distributions from the state highway fund are being used for stormwater. So be as precise as you can about that.
Okay, good.
In the right of way.
Not really our transportation plan, street fund.
Yeah, but you're, but your, your, your point is well-taken. It's, it's kind of a twofer.
Yeah.
It allows you to address stormwater needs and upcoming, not regulatory requirements, upcoming needs, and also relieve some of the burden on the street fund to help benefit the streets, yeah.
Good, good reminder, though. Thank you.
This is all juxtaposed against a new city hall, sidewalks. So it's not, we're not operating just in the stormwater vacuum here. We're, we're talking about some other major projects coming up, too, so.
Russ?
That's going to even make it a steeper hill to climb.
Always.
Right?
So we have before us a couple of options here to move this forward, so we can get our staff some guidance about next steps. And again, we, we could, we could basically adopt a fee tonight. I don't see an, or have not heard of an appetite for that. So our additional options are really just to kind of let this lay low and not take any further steps on it. Now, we have the information, knowing that costs don't go down and things like that. Get additional information if anyone has concerns, or really start having staff think through that public outreach process if we think that's a good way to go, so.
Are you entertaining a motion to?
I, I am. I would entertain a motion.
We have one here. Keeping in mind that each, the estimated cost for each outreach event will be almost $3,000.
Some, some of this is already in our contract.
Okay.
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so that said, I move that council direct staff to initiate a citizen outreach campaign and provide council with a report on the findings of the outreach campaign.
Seconded.
Seconded, moved and seconded. And I, I have one comment there, and obviously, providing council with a report on the findings of the outreach campaign, I am going to certainly personally suggest that we all be very involved in the outreach campaign, and that we are sure that we are there and we are answering questions and working with folks, even those that don't come to the meetings. So I make sure it's not just where now, okay, somebody else, go do all that, communicate and stuff, and come on back and tell us what you find out.
Are you, are we still discussing?
Yeah.
I have a question for you. Are you able to livestream these meetings?
I don't know.
That would be us.
We're able to here.
That would be our capabilities, yeah.
So that people can watch from home.
I'd also like to ensure that it's addressed on social media.
Right. Yep, we can.
In a positive and ongoing way.
Any other discussion about the motion to direct staff to begin that process? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Direction given.
Thank you.
And thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thanks, Matt.
Making this kind of very complex stuff understandable for us and giving us the information we need to make good decisions.
Appreciate the patience.
So this evening, we don't have any other business agenda items, so I will entertain any. any council comments and then we'll take a little break before we go back to our work session. Yes?
I will, I will try to keep it, um, quick. I did attend the Council of Governments Board, um, meeting last, or two weeks ago as a representative of the city of Monmouth for mayor. Um, we approved the consent calendar, which did include the Council of Governments' participation in the continuum of care. Um, we approved the 2020 legislative concept and policies. And we had a brief summary of the 2019 session and a reminder that the Cog Dinner will be on February the 17th in Kaiser. Um, second thing is I also attended the League of Oregon Cities Conference last week and, um, it was a wonderful opportunity. It was my first time attending, great opportunity to network with other public officials and city staff, people all across the state. I learned a lot about equity and inclusion and teamwork, municipal bonds and bonding and, and marketing and tourism. I very much appreciated the opportunity to go and attend and I really am looking forward to next year, which will be in Salem where hopefully we can have some city staff as well as some other counselors. It was well worth the time, so thanks. Yes?
I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Scott McClure for, um, always keeping us in the black. And through your 12 years, you've served with a lot of different councils and you were able to tolerate all of us, so, um, thank you very much and I wish you all the best of luck. I'm sure the council agrees that we should, um, give you all our best good wishes.
Absolutely. Certainly.
Just a, a question, and we've had a couple of references to the continuum of care. Um, where, um, where are we? Because I've had this question come up. Uh, do we have, uh, sit and lie or, an ordinance that prohibits sitting and lying or regulates sitting and lying on?
Have you noticed this?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and others have noticed it to me. And, um, I, I guess we just need to put that on the horizon as, as some of this, this other, you know, the, the group that you've been working with comes to fruition. Um, I, I think it's something we just need to be conscious of.
As Salem can attest, that's really hard to address legislatively.
I, I understand it is.
And within the constitutional constraints of being in the Ninth Circuit of the federal court system.
Isn't there, isn't there a hearing coming up that's challenging that where the, the requirement that if you were to enact an ordinance that, that removes people, you have to provide them with, with shelter?
That's the Boise case.
The Boise case.
Yes.
Isn't that under, coming up under review?
Basically, that's, and that, it is, that is strictly addressed at a camping ordinance. There are other types of ordinances that often they're seen as pretexts and attacked as that. But the, the basic rule of the Boise case is that, uh, a city cannot enforce an anti-camping ordinance against homeless individuals unless it has, uh, the, the, the shelter availability for every homeless person in the city.
Right.
Um, Boise has appealed that case to the U.S. Supreme Court, but that is the rule for the, for the Ninth Circuit. The, again, uh, using curf- not curfew, but, uh, park closure ordinances, litter, um, uh, and, and trespass, certainly on private property. Um, you can cobble together strategies to get at that, uh, even in Salem, you're seeing it somewhat in Salem, using architectural and other elements to make it difficult to camp in certain areas, although I've seen that's become kind of a tug-of-war in San Francisco here this week.
Portland as well.
Yeah, uh, it's just really hard, uh, but, but certainly worth, worth taking a look at if, if, if you want to look at that.
Yeah, at some point.
There, there is no silver, there's no silver bullet out in the, in the Ninth Circuit anyway that's, that's fixed that. Except maybe, I don't think Utah's Ninth Circuit, but they've done a great job in providing, um, shelters. That's, that's the way they've resolved it in Salt Lake City.
All right.
And, and just a note on that, Steph actually has had discussions just even just recently as of today about at least, at least, uh, curfew issues, at least looking at that a little harder. We want to take a look at that because like right now we have that for our parks.
Yeah, not so much curfew, but park closure, yeah.
But not all public buildings.
Right.
And so city hall.
Yeah.
Don't have any regulations, public works facility, library, senior center. So I think we're, we're taking a look at at least controlling at that level.
And you can do that.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right, we are adjourned to work session. Uh, let's go ahead and take 10 minutes to take a break. We'll get back there.
We had a discussion.